If. Thank you, Doris. And might we stand and salute the flag, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. I've got on my watch. It's about a minute past five, although the clock affairs something different. But welcome. This is the October twenty-two meeting of the planning board, the regular monthly meeting. And we have one, two, three. There are five of us up here. So it's a full complement. I want to welcome our newest member, Susan Hewitt.
Thank you.
Thank you for joining us.
Thank you for asking.
I'm thrilled that you're here. So I just spoke to Susan, and this is a warning to anyone. She will have questions surely, and I've encouraged her to just, you know, ask questions. So be, please be patient if there we have to back up and explain things once in a while. We, I'm more than happy to do that and ask for your indulgences. So let's move on to number two minutes. Did folks have a chance to look at the minutes? And there are two minutes we need to look at, sets of minutes. One was from August twenty-two and then September twenty-four. They're the last two months.
Right.
Yes.
If so, I'll take a motion to accept the minutes. Thank you, Drew.
Second.
Thank you, Granja. All those in favor accepting the minutes? Good. Wonderful. Thank you. That's for both August and September, just to be clear about that. Okay, next is decision for the, for two oh one Main Street, which is John Jermaine Library. I'm not sure how to go forward on this. We have, we have a, we got something, we got a few things very late in the day, maybe one hour ago.
amended plans that address the concerns of a neighbor. While that's really great, unfortunately, I think there's a six-foot fence in a front yard proposed as a noise barrier, which may require a variance from the zoning board appeals. This board has no authority to approve anything that doesn't comply with zoning or have the requisite variances in place. So I think the applicant's attorney is here. She's going to address it.
Okay, and that would be Tiffany Scarlet. Can you hear me, Tiffany? We cannot hear you.
Is that better?
I can hear you now. Thank you.
So we did submit, and I apologize for the late submission. We just got it approved by the neighbors council this, late this afternoon. Unfortunately, it has come to my attention that it did cause, it is a six-foot fence in what presumably may be a front yard. I do need to get an interpretation from the building inspector with respect to whether or not that six-foot fence in a front yard, because it is in a residential district, does, may require a variance.
Right.
So in the interests of doing things properly, I'd ask that the board table any approval until the next meeting, and I will let the board know if, you know, I'm headed to the ZBA, and then we'll be back to you.
That makes perfect sense. Can I ask you to follow up on that? You were here two months ago.
Yes.
Not, not last month, last month it was tabled. And two months ago, the representatives, I'm forgetting the gentleman's names, but they're the engineers or the designers. And they showed us, they showed us the, the fence at that point going a different front fence, acoustical fence than one around. That one, I believe, is also six-foot. Am I right about that?
I honestly don't know. I know that this new proposal does specifically include an additional six-foot fence. So that may have been what triggered it. But either way, I think we are likely to need to go back to the zoning board.
If you're seeing the building inspector, and I would suggest you request, you have him give his approval to the other fence as well. It is built up on a base of, of a mound of dirt, essentially. So I want to make sure that, I want to make sure that whatever, if he gives you the approval, we're good to go. If you need, if you're going to the zoning board and you need a variance, that's the time to get for both of them.
Exactly.
You know what I mean?
Exactly. We'll address both of them with the building inspector and make sure that everything is code compliant.
Excellent. That's my point. Thank you very much. So I think then we, if I understand correctly, what we can do, I'll take a motion to table this matter until next month, which would be November, November twenty-sixth, which is
Was that a new date that was?
No, December's a new date. November twenty-sixth is two days before Thanksgiving. I think we all thought that was acceptable.
Yeah.
So I'll
So moved.
Thank you, Granja.
Second.
Thank you. Susan, all those in favor?
Aye.
Wonderful. So that's been tabled now until next month. In the work session, section, I'm going to ask your indulgences. I'm going to switch because of some timeframe issues for, for one of the applicants. We're going to switch, move to number two now, and then go back to number one. If, if that's okay with people. Number two is three oh two Madison.
Two oh three.
Two oh three.
So I'm sorry, two oh three Madison. Thank you. And we are considering the adoption of pre-submission conference report. Kathy Iceman is the author of that report. Kathy, you want to talk about that?
I'm sorry, I'm having trouble hearing Kathy.
Thank you. Both.
Yeah. Okay. So on the, if you can hear all three of us. Okay, so what we've been doing is having the pre-submission conference report put on the screen so people can follow along, but you all have it in front of you as well. The first section on page one is to introduce and provide the purpose of the report, which is to provide an overall application of the public's rights to put on, say, an application, as well as on the SECR, on items that might come up during the SECR review, the environmental review process. So that was held, and only last month, in September. The board has six days to adopt this after the closing of the hearing, but we didn't, don't have it applied until now and the end of November. So we wanted to make sure that we had it. That's why we, you know, have it tonight. So this is an application to expand a pre-existing non-deformal use that has a retail use and two apartment, so in the residential zone. So it's a, looks like a house, but has little slums on. It's on the corner of Jermaine and Madison Street. And at this point, there were a few things that came up during the meeting from the planning board, and I think that there were a few comments from the public, so I'll go through those. But see, oh, and they're going to, they're going to expand this. They want to expand the gallery space to include an office space above, and they want to extend one of the apartments, and I believe one of the other apartments, the apartments actually getting smaller, because they're going to effectively redo them.
Okay.
They're also going to have two separate parking areas, one on located off of Jermaine, which is sort of their existing, it is their SECR cut, and another kind of informal area of parking off of Madison that, right now, actually, there is a curb and a sidewalk there. So accessing that isn't really a formal parking area at this point.
At present, it's not formal. They want to formalize that. Got it.
Thank you. Yes. Better way of saying it. Thank you. So some of the, you heard some of the comments that came up. There were some concern about the configuration of the parking stalls specifically for the parking area on Jermaine, because it did seem that cars would have to back out onto the street, and it wasn't clear that people had enough turnaround space. So that is on the applicant's burden to demonstrate that it works safely and, you know, that it can work. There is also concern regarding pedestrian circulation during construction, because that's a group school, it's a school nearby, and the kids walk along Jermaine to get to the school. And Oh, I'm sorry. I'm already on page three. Page three. Yes. Okay. So I'm on number two there. So the thought was that the applicant should work with the village to make sure that there's a plan for circulation and safety setup for during construction, because they're going to need to use some of the sidewalk space during construction. And there was also the request on behalf of the planning board that they, that the applicant explore redoing the sidewalk in this area after construction, because there is some damage to the sidewalk. And actually, I think it's pretty narrow.
Yep.
The public had asked, a couple of things came up, whether, what's the suitability of the proposed driveway configuration? Does it make sense maybe to connect the two parking areas or combine them? Maybe only have one out of the two? And so that, that's been included, and it makes sense for the applicant to explore other options. The other question came up is what happens in the future if they ask to convert the upstairs office space to another apartment? And so the question is, what are the limiting factors here? And the applicant had responded during the pre-submission conference that the health department limits the amount of residential density without a connection to a sewer. But, you know, they're, you know, want to explore that a little bit further.
Yeah.
You know, are there, are there ways to make sure that that is converted in the future? Or that there is something in place that they, that needs to do, they want it converted in the future.
Right.
And then again, concern regarding construction vehicles blocking the road during, during construction. So that's similar to the concern about pedestrian access during construction. So far, it's
Yep. All good. All great.
So, so on page three at the bottom, we have the code review and the initial completeness review. There are certain elements that are missing from the plans that need to be addressed. So we just created a list. I'm sorry. The next one is that because a non-deformal use in a residential district would be deemed abandoned after a certain period of time, there's a requirement that the applicant provide an affidavit, establishing that the used use had not been abandoned. So that is another layer, if those had been abandoned. One of the other things is that they had included two different plans called site plan. One is sanitary site plan, and one is a site plan dash parking. And it appears that most of the elements that are required by the planning board would be on that separate plan. And so we, we would recommend that they incorporate everything into one set, and there's not a reason to have a separate plan. Only leads to confusion in the future, and, you know, keeping things consistent would be a problem. Next one. Another one is the apartment. The labeling of the apartments is different on different sheets, but they're Yeah, that's it. Apartment one is shown as
Cleaning that up. Make, yeah.
Although it's not explicitly required in the zoning code, we always recommend that a zoning compliance table be included, and that has all requirements, the existing conditions, what the maximum solar requirements are, and that helps to trigger what, what, what variance to require. So we made a list of those items that we would ask that they include in the zoning compliance table. Detailed parking applications should also be included, and any deficiencies identified. There's potential that they are not, the way the plan is drawn right now, the proposed ADA parking stall does not meet the standards for accessibility. There is to be a demonstrated accessible route between the ADA parking stall and the accessible building entrance or entrances. A detailed drainage plan should be provided. If there's any changes in grade, that those should be identified. And another thing is especially for both of them, where they're going to make modifications to the sidewalk, there are to be details provided that are consistent with those code and get approval for a curb cut. For that, we, the new curb for Madison.
Yep.
So the next, oh wait, you listed the, the list of approvals that are required based on our review at this time. And also have identified the SECR requirements. This is a type one action under the village code. And so it fully AF was submitted. We've reviewed it, mentioned with a couple of iterations of changes. The applicant actually revised the change today. And we took a look at them, and those are, those are acceptable. They're fine. So I would recommend that at this point, the planning board, in addition to accepting this report
Initiate coordination.
Exactly.
Yeah, good.
Start the lead agency coordination period.
Good.
We'll send those letters out. And if we don't get anybody saying that they would prefer to be lead agency, the board can go ahead with that in November. So the next steps really are that, you know, to revise the plans and to address some of these comments or react to them and continue with the SECR process.
Right, right. And you said, just to back up to the EF, you, you said you, I think what happened today, right? The back and forth you had, it was finalized today?
Yeah.
In some fashion?
Yeah.
I haven't seen them, of course, yet. I don't think I have, but you'll share them, I assume, soon.
Yep.
But you're confident that there are a place where we can begin the, the SECR process?
Yeah, they corrected all the items, and there were new items that were missing that people found in.
Great.
One item was a depth of bed rock, which is something that most people don't know where to find that. So we just, you know, gave it
Okay.
So, right.
Okay, good. Anyone from the board have questions for Kathy or questions about this particular application? Thorough, it's thorough and good job, but I think it's good to go.
I do have a version that is not, that's not a watermark that I can give to Doris if, if you want to adopt this as is. But I also, again, I have it on my computer if you need to change anything.
I don't feel I need to change anything. I'm putting my They'll entertain a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Thank you, Larry.
Second.
Thank you, Granja. All those in favor to adopt?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. And shall we just go for, and how do we initiate the SECR review? Coordination.
We're going to make a motion to assume the agency, coordinate the agency. That's what you're going to make a motion to do. And then, and that'll direct Doris to send out the letters tomorrow.
All right, then, then I would accept if someone would like to make a motion to coordinate, begin coordination of lead agency by the planning board for this, for SECR for this matter. Thank you, Drew. And maybe seconded by Susan. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Wonderful. So that has begun. Is there anything else I'm missing on that? I think we're good. Thank you. I should have asked you if you had anything you wanted to say. Welcome, welcome. Let's move on then. I'm going to backtrack to number one in the work session section, which is five ninety-five Realty Corp. thirty-one Madison Street. I don't know if there's anything to talk about this really, except I, I know this is, we have already scheduled a pre-submission conference for a month from now.
Yeah. And then actually, I just wanted to to, to say one thing about this.
Yeah.
We hadn't put together a summary of that one, of that application yet, but we will get back to you next week. Because actually, we have a lot of that information. This is very similar to an application that was made a couple of years ago. So we'll, we'll create something so that way you have it, you know, the basic information about it before the pre-submission conference.
Fine. Okay.
All right.
Good.
So I'll get that out next week.
Okay, super.
I had a question.
Yes.
On this one, looking over the original materials, they're eliminating the kitchen in order to put in retail? So how, I mean, upstairs is essentially a hotel. I mean, how does that, does that figure into this?
We have some, introduce yourself, please, and
Oh, no.
Oh, sorry.
I can't interrupt your machine, but my name is Katie Bowers, creative, creative agency. We represent the public kitchen. The kitchen would be relocated upstairs, and just to clarify, wouldn't, upstairs would not be apartments or hotels, it would be a single family residence.
Even though it's now a B and B?
It's not.
It's not anymore. Oh, okay, because that's what the website shows.
I will check on that. It shouldn't be.
Okay.
Like that, my understanding is not a B and B moment will be used as a single family residence. The idea of the downstairs area would be, I think it would be like a light time retail, so you would walk into the kitchen, and you could buy an espresso machine, or you could buy a plate, or bowls. It would now be functioning as a kitchen, but it would appear as a kitchen, but it would be free to. So obviously, if that application proved, we would need to install a kitchen upstairs. We haven't gone forward with those plans yet, because we are still in the pre-submission stage, but accordingly, once, you know, as we get along and have patients protest, we would propose where exactly the kitchen would be located in the second floor.
Great. Thanks.
Thank you for that clarification. I'm shy, sorry about your voice. And where are we with the EAF on that? We have, we haven't, I can't remember.
So, so because this was, this was just kind of like, let's put it on for a pre-submission conference that hasn't really come up. It is also a type one action under the village code, so this would require a both EAF and a short EAF submitted, my understanding.
That's what I thought. Yeah.
And is it type one because of the square footage?
Let me just find my notes. It is in one second. It's because it's a change of use in the SECR code.
Even though
Yeah, it's a
It's business.
Yeah, it's in, if you see section one twenty-five and go on.
Okay. So if I understand correctly, we'll be seeing you next month for the pre-submission conference, which is a public hearing, which has to be noticed, of course. And, and you now know that you have to do the full EAF, and I'll get that all rolling. Good. Excellent. Thank you for coming in. Feel better. Okay, let's move on to number three now. And this is two Main Street slash twenty-two Long Island Avenue. We're considering scheduling a pre-submission conference for a public hearing for November twenty-sixth, which is next month. Kathy, you sent out a memorandum to us?
Yes.
So, can you hear me?
Yep.
Barbara, can you hear me? No.
No.
Sorry. Yes.
Okay. Okay. Wow, okay. That's nice. Got it.
Yes.
Okay. So you're all familiar with this property. It's two Main Street and twenty-two Long Island Avenue. It involves the U C building on the corner and the building that has the seven eleven and other uses, and another building behind it, a bunch of other uses. And they are proposing second floors on both of those buildings and including, kind of filling in the used space to to Main Street. So we just, we did put together a list of suggestions for the pre-submission conference space, because this is in the waterfront overlay district. The zoning district is the EB district, but it's also in that overlay district. So it has a whole set of additional standards related to, you know, I mean, that special district, so, and it is considered waterfront property, so there are additional standards that apply to the property. So we included those in, on memo as suggestions for, you know, correcting the applicant to get a little bit more feedback on how they're going to explore what they're incorporating.
Right. Good. I don't think anyone's here from the, from the applicant tonight, right? Or is there someone here? Fine. Then I don't think there's any anything to do other than to schedule.
Circulated to the applicant, so they have a copy.
Yeah, good.
Why am I here?
Sorry, I can't see, I can't see anyone on the screen, so I apologize for that. One minute.
Tiffany, where are you?
Sorry, Tiffany.
That's okay. We did receive the, we did receive the pre-submission, pre-conference memo.
Okay, good, good. All right, then if, Tiffany, you have any questions? Are you good to go?
No, good to go for November. Thanks.
Okay, wonderful. Okay, then I'll accept a motion to schedule a public hearing for pre-submission conference on November twenty-sixth, I think it is, of this year, a month from now. Thank you, Granja. Thank you, Drew. All those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. So that'll be a month from now. And that is a public hearing, of course. I'm reminding people.
One more thing.
Yes.
So this one also is a type one action, so it would also require a full EAF.
Fully EAF required. Yeah, okay.
And the sooner that gets in, the sooner we can start.
Right. Were you able to hear that, Tiffany?
I'm sorry. I didn't hear what Kathy said.
She just mentioned, she was reminding us that this is a type one action and requires full EAF. So the sooner that gets initiated, the sooner we can move forward with coordinating SECR.
Yes.
So that's just a FYI.
Yes, thank you.
Good. All right. Moving right along. Ah, number four is funding application of six, sixty-three Main Street, which is Paige Restaurant. I believe we got a letter today or an email requesting
I am here as well in person, requesting that the matter be adjourned, Tiffany Scarletto again, miss, requesting that this be adjourned until your first meeting in January of twenty twenty-five. We are at the zoning board and need to be re-noticed, so we won't be able to come back to you properly on a very practical level until January.
Okay, that's helpful. So then, thank you, Tiffany. So I'll take a, I'll take a, I'll take a motion to adjourn this application until the first meeting in January twenty twenty-five. Thank you. Susan, second. Granja, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we'll, we'll, we won't see this one again until January of next year.
So correct, that, that meeting is January twenty eighth.
January twenty-eighth, for the record. Okay, excellent. That covers all the things that are on the agenda. There are a couple of things that, that came up toward the end of the day that I want, I want to add on now. These are, these are more internal things, but procedure. And Liz, Liz was good enough to put together I don't know what you call this. It's a, it's a memo or booklet or something. Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to hand out all the sections of the code that apply to the planning board. So first is the section on the planning board, then special exception uses, so you can familiarize yourself with the code, too. Subdivision of land, and just a little, the chapter one twenty-five, environmental quality review, which enhances the SECR requirements for the village, whatever the village chose in there, which Kathy was saying. So that's just where it's referenced in case.
Okay, good. That's helpful.
Yeah.
All in one place.
Thank you, Liz.
Thank you.
Liz also sent around an email, I think it was earlier today, maybe? About maybe adding something to our list of procedures for the planning board. If you, Susan won't know this, but back in February or March, we considered adopting some procedures to make sure that we all had, just make things flow better, so that the board members had enough time to read and digest what was fed to them. And also making sure, at the same time, making sure that applicants were fairly treated and had their applications seen on and discussed on time. So that, we actually voted on, I think it was in March perhaps. And if you look at the, at the printout, I don't think you have, but it was an email that went around for that.
Yeah.
One through four, I think, is what we adopted in, in March. And we've had some success with that, as you saw today.
Some things come in less than eight days. Who's going to ask whether I needed to keep the hour before the meeting free for?
Yeah, so, so let, let me read to you. Did you want to say something?
Yes, just about what happened today.
Yes.
If we're adopting these rules, which govern it time-wise, has to be in so many days before this won't happen again of the flood on the day of a meeting, because we wouldn't be able to address those issues, because the information was not provided on time. Is that correct?
It's really the board's discretion.
It's really the board's discretion. I think that it will always happen where applicants will try and submit something last minute for the board's consideration. And if you have this policy set in place and adopted, technically, you could say, hey, you know, we have to, we have to defer to this. You should have gotten those documents in the evening before.
So it probably depends upon the nature of the documents that are coming in, how important they are and how much attention they require on our part.
Exactly.
Okay.
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah, so if it was a single page or a minor, minor revision, say, then we can, we can, we can do that. But um, uh, if we're multiple plant sheets and documents and we haven't had a chance to look, it's just, you know, I think that's the idea. It's, uh, to a certain extent, was, the, the idea behind this was to encourage people to um, do things earlier in the month. And actually, it, it moved us at the planning board to move, to do things earlier in the month. So um, Kathy and I and Liz would meet two weeks after this meeting and sort of review where we were and then sort of, and then sit down a week after that. So we, we were trying to get ourselves prepared and hopefully the, the applicant's the same. Um, there's a fifth, number five now. It was, this is a new item that um, Liz has brought up. And Liz, if you wanna speak to it.
Sure, so there's been some um, issues with the fact that we only meet once a month. Um, and actually getting the notices to the paper in time so it can be published for a pre-submission hearing. Pre-submission conference hearing was enacted, what, two years ago, a year ago? And essentially, the effort, the goal is to get the application, if it rises to a certain level, out to the public as soon as possible. And um, the way that we've been handling it before was we would ask the board to pass a resolution setting the pre-submission hearing. Um, then it came up that why can't this just be done internally, since the code is actually silent on procedurally how you set that public hearing? Technically, it could be done internally by staff. Um, an application would come in. Kathy would determine if a pre-submission conference was necessary. If I help, she could ask for my help. It's pretty clear in the code. And then Doris could tell us a notice is required. I prepare the notice and it would go to the paper. Um, and the goal would be to notice it as quickly as possible so that you're not missing a month in between while you're waiting for the board to be, to set, to adopt a resolution setting that public hearing. Um, and it's ultimately up to the board, but um, you know, we patterned it after the town of Southampton planning board and they meet twice a month. So it's much easier than things on track there. You meet once a month, which is kind of creating a lag um, at times. Not always, sometimes it, it works out perfectly. It just depends on when it's submitted.
Right.
So it's up to you to consider whether you want to pass a resolution specifically setting a public hearing for that or if you want us to do it internally.
It's.
And it's triggered by the code. It's not, it's not a.
And when you say internally, when is that, that would be you specifically?
It would be Kathy. Yeah, and it should need to be.
Yeah.
That too, but it goes to Kathy, she could use it and all, starts looking at the report. The only issue that I could see would come up is if a, is if an applicant wants to waive it entirely, um, then.
Then they'd have to wait.
They could come to the meeting.
Right.
And say, hey, we, you know, it's, I think it's, there's a provision where you could waive it if you wanted to.
Yes.
Code, um, but they could come to the meeting and say, please don't make me go through this pre-submission process.
Sorry, they would waive it in the sense that they would live without any feedback. I'm just trying to understand the circumstances, which they'd like to have their application considered without.
The initial hearing. They would still probably require a hearing under the, say, plan review or the special exception review, which is required by law, but just the initial extra hearing that we created.
Did we have one? I think, feel like we'd had one of those. I'm not.
Yeah, I think we did. Well, I think we did, where they, we are, you actually waived the entire process. Uh, Kathy, do you remember which one it was? Thinking of it, in Smash Burger?
Cluckman's, yeah.
Smash Burger?
Yeah, it was Cluckman's.
Right, right. And, and that, that was a part of our rationale. Just on that one was, it was late spring, I think, or spring. And we knew they wanted to get in, um, you know, by, you know, the summer. And it was, you know, it was all, it was, it was, it was a change of use, but it was a use that was permitted in the district. It didn't, it didn't seem like it was creating any big trouble.
Trigger parking, right?
It didn't trigger parking. That was an important one. It did not trigger parking issues, right?
Yes.
Um, right. Um, okay. And I don't think, the only other thing I can think of is, I know, once we have a pre-submission conference, there's, there's a, a time clock.
Yeah.
Um, but.
There's a mandatory thirty-day comment period, which is pretty extensive as well.
This is thirty days or ten days?
About ten days, sorry.
Ten days, yeah.
For written comments, right.
And then you have thirty days.
Now we have, it's sixty days total to write the report, to get the report.
Right. It was thirty days and we extended it a year ago because when we were in the holiday season, sometimes we moved the, our dates a little bit ahead or behind and, and then suddenly our monthly meeting didn't allow, you know.
That's right.
You know, so we amended it so that we could go to sixty days, but we all understood that, that's, that's not ideal. We want, we wanna get it done in a month or so. Um, and we've done, I think we've done pretty good with that. Um.
So we did have one come up where the applicant actually asked us to delay the pre-submission conference uh, hearing though. So we might wanna, you know, have a mechanism to ask them, are you guys ready to have this hearing? Well, they can always ask for, you know, they can always ask to adjourn it or cancel it.
Would there ever be an application where you would not grant a pre-submission conference? Or is it, you're kind of making it sound like it's automatic?
It's triggered by the code.
Right.
Unless you decide to waive it.
So in a way, there's no reason to vote on it.
Right, I mean, it's ministerial.
It's ministerial, correct. Yeah, it's triggered by the code.
Okay.
I mean, unless you decide to waive it.
Right.
Which you have, you're allowed to waive really anything in the brand code.
But when we vote for it, it's like you would never vote not to do a pre-submission hearing.
I mean, no, I don't anticipate that. Unless, that would be waiving it, right?
Waiving it.
Or be voting not to hold the hearing. If you, yeah, there's a possibility that you.
Which we, which we've done once, I think.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just asking.
Yeah, I think we, I think we've seen it.
Essentially voting to eliminate the vote. That's what we're voting on.
So what, yeah, we're waiving it. But I, but I think the new point that's been added here is just that internally, they can set the pre-submission conference. They couldn't waive it. That would have to only happen at the board.
Correct, you're, you would have to.
So that, that does change.
And I'm assuming Kathy and Liz, that if, if you folks in particular are the ones who are gonna be pulling the trigger to, to set, you know, set it up. If the applicant, to your point, if the applicant was saying, hey, we're not gonna be ready next, next month, can you make, make it for, you know, April? Then you can just go ahead and make it in April, um, right? It's not.
Yeah.
Honestly, honestly.
It's gonna be the newspaper's fault.
Blame the newspaper.
They just straight.
Well, there are deadlines.
Deadlines.
There are deadlines. It's a public, it's a public hearing.
Don't worry, two weeks, I'll send to a work camp.
Oh, don't say that.
So the, the one thing is that I, I, there was a request to do the, this for uh, to West, to Main Street and twenty-two Long Island Avenue to have it, you know, to be scheduled for tonight. Uh, except that we didn't have the time for the noticing and, and also you hadn't seen anything.
Yeah.
So uh, if, if, oh, if you approve this concept, there still will be a meeting in between. It just, you don't have to wait for this meeting and then the next meeting to get to a pre-submission conference. We'll still be able to discuss it at the meeting in between, you know, and you'll be familiar with the project. You won't see cold the pre-submission conference like everybody else.
Okay.
I think that's important.
Oh, do, do you think there always would be a meeting in between?
Yes.
You do?
Unless, unless they bring it in on like the whatever day. I mean, I, you know, sometimes the, the months might work that way. They uh, submit it on the day that is, it's not.
Just thirty.
It's always gonna be.
Yeah, it always would be.
Always gonna be.
Okay.
So.
Okay. I, I don't see a problem with it personally. Um. But I wanted to talk it through, so thank, thank you for, thank you for bringing that up. Um, well, so then, okay, so um. Liz, do, is this the resolution that you, you sent out as an email?
Yes.
To us?
Yeah, it says, in order to comply with the notice requirement, deadlines set by the local newspaper, pre-submission conference hearings may be scheduled by building department or planning staff internally without a resolution of this board pursuant to the standard set forth in the village code, section three hundred dash fourteen, right five. It's just number five under policy presentation.
Fine. So, thank you, Susan. So all those, so second to adopt the, the new policy, five and the policy of the, of the procedures?
Second.
Thank you, Grania. All those in favor, if you adopt?
Aye.
Aye.
Right, who made the motion?
That was Susan.
Susan.
And Grania seconded.
Can you add that to the bottom of it? I'll send it to you, Doris. You can head it to the bottom of the page and then we'll put it on the website.
Fine, good. Thank, thank you for that. Um, and then lastly, um, something I want to bring up, which was brought up prior, is, is the idea of training, the necessity of training of members. It's, it's code required.
Four hours every year.
Four hours every year. And in the, Doris has explained to me that in the, late in the year and early in the year, I think uh, the village, explain it to me again, if you would, but we get, we get.
We get them from the village clerk, the conferences, invitations, when they happen in the fall or winter or beginning of the year. And then they send out to the members as an invitation to sign up.
And, and I've done that in the past and I've, and you, I've done things online. I've also gone to places. And they're actually, you know, informational. You learn things and you get to sort of meet people. But in addition to that, this year Kathy has orchestrated something, right? That the village has signed up with.
Uh, it's the Nat, it's the New York Planning Federation. It's an organization. They're based in Albany, I think. And they do many, many, many learn at lunches, which uh, you know, earn the, you know, hours in that way. They'll, they'll provide a certificate. They also have kind of packaged uh, groups of webinars that you can take on your own time. And once you complete them, you let them know and they'll send the certificate. So uh, it's a, it's a great opportunity. Max Stock is my partner up in our Hudson Valley office to give a uh, session on CECLAP. Um, I think it was in summertime, right? Um, I think you attended.
Yeah, I did.
Other people attended.
I did.
And uh, no, it's a nice way also, if you attend these, that you can ask questions. Sometimes you learn the most when you actually ask that, that burning question, so.
Right, right. How will we learn about these opportunities?
So uh, that's, that's a great segue. Uh, I'm gonna, I will speak with Kate, look after her tomorrow and get a list of all the email addresses of all the board members, because it's actually open to the planning and zoning board members have to do it. But ARB members, uh, Harvard committee members, uh, board members, uh, the board members, if they're interested, they can uh, sign up for these events as well. Uh, Nancy, who's the uh, the executive director, even said that if there's ad hoc committees for a comprehensive plan, for instance, uh, they can also be eligible to, to, you know, sign on to these things. It's, it's a very, you know, they're very easygoing. Once you've signed up, you're good. And I have to say, it's a very favorable thing for a village. It was two hundred and ninety-five dollars for the year.
For the village, yeah.
And she actually said, you sign up now, I'll give you all of twenty twenty, twenty-five.
Great, great.
Um, you got an extra month and a half.
So to be clear, it doesn't cost us anything.
Right.
The village pays for it. Um, we, we will be getting emails in our, in our village email um, addresses.
Yes.
Um, and then just keep an eye out for it. And these are good things to do and, and actually required to do. And I think it's not just in the code, but might even be state law. I'm not even sure, but.
It is near state law.
I think it is, yeah, yeah, for, for, for zoning and planning people. Um, so um, so good. I wanted to bring that up and make sure that we're, we're all on board and do that. I actually like it. I think, I think it's interesting.
Kathy, did you say that there was online opportunities to comply with the state requirement or is it just?
Yes, yeah. You could do the four hours. You don't even have to do it in one script go. You can do it in four sessions and do it at your own pace. And once you complete that, you email her and she'll send you the certificate.
So it could be more than one topic?
Yes, yeah.
As opposed to more?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And they are, they are recognized as providers of this type of certification.
And as they created this, uh, they create these programs, they remain on their website. They accumulate on the website, is that?
So, yeah, yeah.
Or is it just something fresh that comes out?
I think, I'm, I'm not sure about the learn at lunches. They might not be as available for after the fact, but definitely the uh, you know, the general planning board and zoning board training, they definitely have those as recorded sessions. So um, the other thing is, you know, if you wanna go, I think they're having is, where is it? Cooperstown this year. They are having a, they have a one-day uh, planning uh, conference. And there are towns, uh, villages and towns that send people from Long Island. It's not just upstate, so.
Are, are there?
You need other people and.
Are there any Suffolk County?
Yes, yes.
Groups that deal with Suffolk County issues?
I am the, actually, the treasurer for the Long Island section of the American Planning Association. And we do a um, an East End conference pretty much every year. Last year, we didn't do it in March, so we're probably gonna do it in March this year, next year too. And we have, we try to keep the topics very current. And uh, those are generally accepted. And you know, basically, if you go and you participate, we usually have a walking tour and two sessions, so you can get the four hours in one afternoon.
I can say that last year, I think it was last year, Larry and I went together to exactly that in Riverhead. And it was, it was actually a really interesting walking tour of what they're doing in Riverhead, both with um, affordable housing opportunities over near the train station and looking at the, the square they, they're building by buying dilapidated buildings and knocking them down. So it was really interesting. Um, and then there was some, you know, there was some talks and back and forth.
And it was bitter cold.
It was bitter cold, yeah.
So the walking tour was.
But it was good, but it was good.
The American Planning Association is, uh, they have the, the AICT certification for, for planners, it's what I have. We have to do continuing education.
Right.
Uh, so we, those are our members, the paying customers of APA are the dues-paying members. But we've always opened it up to planning and zoning board members.
Good.
Great.
Good, thank you. Okay, so we'll keep our eyes up for that and, and um, I'll, I'll remind people to keep your eyes open for that as well.
And I'll make a note to, to talk to Kate tomorrow.
Excellent, good. Um, anything else for you folks on the board, want to, want to bring up, or we good to go? If we're good to go, then I'll accept the motion to adjourn. Thank you, Drew.
Second.
Thank you, Larry. All those in favor, adjourning.
Aye.
Thank you. And um, congratulations, Susan. You complete.
Yes, well, thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
Good night, everybody.
And we did it under a tower. Pretty good. Not bad.